Planning Commission and some of the solar advisory board with us. I guess we could just do one on two introductions first. So, I'm Commissioner Mark Albertson, Mr. James Williams.
Commissioner Barry Shulmerger.
Melanie Lasley.
Nick Johnson with L C R I.
Jim Walls, Planning Commission.
Karen Morgan, Planning Commission.
Stu Burgess, Planning Commission.
Richard Brogary, Citizen.
Nora Taylor, Planning Commission.
Carl Schumway, Chris Salle.
Kevin Hall, Road Department.
Jerry Crawford, Planning Commission.
Garrett Roseberry, Solar Advisory.
Danielle Jester with the Lake County Examiner.
So, I guess the main reason I wanted to get everybody together was.
We do have Lori on the phone.
Oh, great.
Oh, I'm muted, sorry.
Are you muted?
Yeah, sorry Lori, we just went through intros and I was pointing out that you're on the phone as well. And it looks like John Jennings just joined us too, thanks, thank you both for attending, we're just getting started now.
Do you want to upgrade them?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Anyone not at the side?
All signed, we might all sign it later.
Yeah, thanks.
Can you guys hear us? John, Lori?
No, you're good.
Uh, can't hear them.
They got their.
There's a man, John.
I see John. I'm not hearing anyone yet.
Can you hear us, John?
Hey, everybody.
Great, there, perfect.
The main reason that we wanted to get everybody together is on our comprehensive plan. It talks about renewable energy, it was done in the eighties, doesn't talk much about solar. Most of the conversation's about geothermal. I don't want to get every application appealed, have to go through every appeal process. It takes up a huge amount of time for the county, for its citizens, for the applicant. Uh, and so what I'm going to do is kind of streamline what we want as a county. As a solar plan and work on updating our solar plan. So, we don't have to go through this every time because it's a, it's a big job. Does anybody, I could start, I guess, with kind of what I'm looking at, so, one of the.
I don't think your microphone's there.
You're right, Terry, can you hear me better now? Sorry.
Yeah.
I guess what I'm, my main focus is that I want the solar committee and the planning committee to decide on and help us decide on is. Irrigated farmland is definitely not something I want solar on. But, like in this case, this last case, we were, we got an application that was on actively used pasture ground. And, um, I know Garrett, when you were still living out on Stock Drive, they were going to build within fifty feet of his structures. I want to extend that, I don't want solar up against somebody's house, you know, fifty feet is ridiculous. Um, was it fifty or five hundred? Fifty.
Fifty, fifty's a current setback on minimum.
And all of this could be mitigated, so like if somebody doesn't care that's fifty feet from their house. If they work it out with that applicant, have at it. But, if somebody doesn't want something fifty feet, you know. If somebody loses their water right for some reason. And they can't irrigate the ground and it doesn't make good pasture, I could see talking and mitigating that away. But those are my main concerns with solar. I'm not against solar, it brings in a lot of money from the county. I just want it in the right places, you know, and so. James, you want to go and we'll go on around?
Not very good. Um, I just want to, you know, I know there's been a lot of conflict in the community and among the community members. Neighbors against neighbors in some cases, in many cases being that all these solar applications have been on private land. And, uh, so someone is deciding, it's not that the county in any way, shape or form is going in saying, we want to put solar here. I mean, these are landowners who are wanting to put solar on their land. And so, and then, and then you have other landowners, don't own any of that. Want to come in and tell this person what they can and can't do when it comes to an allowable use. And especially on things like Commissioner Albertson says, we've talked a little bit in the past about if it can be mitigated. Or if there's, i- if there's conditions, okay regarding impacts, how does this work? And it, but are we still sitting here in a governmental position, looking for a way to get to yes? Or are we looking for a way to get to no? What is our goal here in this position of governance? In good governance, trying to find the best path forward that, that provides those rights to that landowner and that those individuals? Because that's who we're talking about here. And if we're going to start making a lot of restrictions, I'm sitting here and I'm saying, okay, so how far are we going with that? Because that's a really delicate balance for us in our position. So, I think, you know, there's definitely impacts, you know, we've talked about, you know, loss to our culture. We've talked about impacts to our culture because we all live in a very agriculturally centered community. Um, the majority of people however, that have had a lot of complaints about solar, aren't always farmers. They're actually typically people who've got conditional use permits for non-farm dwellings and agricultural land. And, so, we are sitting here though, and this board has prioritized wanting to preserve the agricultural land we have for agriculture. We took a very strong position on agricultural use and solar not being allowed on irrigated farmlands or at least taking those irrigated farmlands. Out of agricultural use, that's been a very strong position that we've taken. Now, I do think that if we're going to have this conversation, we went ahead and had solar advisory committee. We've never really had strong, like recommendations come from the solar advisory committee. Um, like as to what ordinance changes are we looking for? Like we say, oh, we want changes, the ordinance, it's old, well, so is the constitution. Are we going to change that? If we're going, we need to be specific, and I think the solar advisory committee was a great idea. But we need to start actually making it work. And we, I, I, I have proposed, and I kind of brought something, Darwin, if you want, you can hand that sheet of paper out, you know? Um, I sat down with, uh, a gentleman from, uh, Or- Oregon Agricultural Trust. And I think that they would be a wonderful third-party facilitator in this conversation, or possibly. If there's another one maybe, I mean, we could, we could discuss it. But I had them draw up some things for us to consider. Um, largely around agriculture and priorities in agriculture in the conversation. It would be a good neutral party for the advisory committee, for the planning commission, for us. Figure out what all of our priorities are, because there's just too many people at the table. There's too much going on and everyone has a different perception. So I thought this might be a good way to kind of move forward, plus, this is another, another part of it. And I don't see that agency here today, but I'm going to talk about them anyway. Um, O D F N W have had a lot to say about how we mitigate for impacts, the wildlife mitigation. And there's been some litigation over the matter with solar companies and O D F N W. In fact, they, O D F N W was even a joint appellate, um, when they appealed us and our decision to approve. So.
What's O D F N W?
Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Um, so. You know, they, they're, they're, they're an advisory agency and we want to better understand their concerns. So, I, uh, O D F N W have met with these folks too, with this gentleman who wrote this up. Um, kind of expressed their concern, I want them at the table also. Uh, we're seeing new things in Lake County, for instance, I was telling this to the board. Recently, there was an application for a very large-scale solar facility on B L M land. That's not happened in, not only in Lake County, but anywhere in the state before. We're just not trying to figure out what that actually means. Um, does that ever go through us? Do we even have a say-so in that matter? We're talking about discretion and what sightings should look like, what these agreements should look like, what the, what the benefit to Lake County should be. As far as dollars and revenue and everything else. We don't know what that looks like on applications on federal land. It might not be anything. So, these are conversations I want everyone at the table. And Darwin simply does not have the capacity to be the facilitator for this kind of a conversation. Because he has a lot of other things going on and on his plate. So, I would, I'm recommending that having a third-party facilitator going forward. But I would like to take this opportunity today for folks on the solar advisory committee and the planning commission. You guys have seen this, you guys have been the boots on the ground for, you know, Jim, you've led some very difficult conversations on the planning commission. You know, you've, you've balanced a lot of different views, um, and you've got a long history working with natural resources in Lake County. And I think if we're going to have this kind of a conversation, it's a big conversation about where we go and we start changing how we do things. We need to have a third-party that can kind of gather in all those perspectives and try and actually make it make sense. So, that's in a nutshell what I'm hoping to get from this today, if there's something lacking from this that you guys have all seen. Um, write it down, send it to us in an email, what you think our priority should be, is there something else we should consider? Is there something missing? That's what I'm hoping to accomplish. That's good. Try to get around the big pieces together. Now, let me go.
This looks great to me, I was just wondering if there's a cost associated with this.
Oh, there will be a cost.
And then are, is this a single-source purchase? What are we going to do or procure that?
You mean a, a RFP or anything?
Well, I don't have a threshold of the cost, I was just.
Well, I don't know, hopefully it's under that threshold. So.
Sorry.
I'd like to have that.
Is what it's sounding like it is.
About it too.
Oh yeah, absolutely, but see, this is, I'm bringing it to you guys too because we will be looking to foot the bill for whatever we end up doing. If, if, uh, you know, they took the time and did this with no cost, to, to help us, give us, to give us some ideas on what we could consider. Um, and I think, uh, you know, if we did decide to, you know, if it came back and the cost was enormous. We're going to have to go off our RFP and find someone that's willing to take the job on and actually going to meet all the needs that we have. Sorry, Darwin, again.
So, Elaine Albridge is also with us now on, on and, and we've heard to panelists as well.
Yes.
She, to steal her words, as she put in the chat, uh, she would also suggest Sustainable Northwest as a possible facilitator. They have facilitation experience on complicated natural resources and rural economic development issues. So that's another available partner.
Yeah, no, it's, that's actually one that I was kind of considering, you know, reaching out to, but, uh, this, this gentleman happened to be in Lake County. And already been having some conversations with O D F N W. Excuse me, but I, well, pardon, but I tried to pull this together in a very short period of time. Because I wanted to have a way for this meeting, sorry, Commissioner Shulmerger, you're next.
Well, first of all, I want to welcome the new planning commission folks and, uh, you know, make you feel welcome. Uh, obviously you're getting the vibes here that, uh, we've had some contentious discussions in the past about solar. And, uh, you know, originally I think the county had, uh, ideas that, hey, we want to, we want to welcome all solar. And be the renewable energy county of Oregon. And, and to an extent, I think we can agree with that. Um, but now that we've got solar and we keep getting more and more applications. Uh, you know, we have to, we've, we've seen the impacts that it's had to private property. And now potentially to federal land in Lake County. We'd like to, you know, pull up the reins and that's why we, we asked for the solar committee to come together and whatnot. But, what do we want for Lake County? What do we want to look like five years from now, ten years from now? What are we going to be comfortable with? And, um, you know, we're seventy percent, seventy-six percent federal land, twenty-four percent private. And of that, only six percent, I believe, is irrigated. So, that really brings it down to a small amount. And I think that we've heard, uh, clear from some of our public that, hey. Let's be very careful about where future solar and renewable energy projects are going to go.
It's actually two point six percent irrigated.
Is it?
It's lower.
Lower than six?
Yeah, it's two point six.
Two point six, okay.
Much on opportunity to connect.
Good, I need it. So anyway, you can kind of see some of the things we're wrestling with. Agriculture is one of the strongest economies in Lake County. And, um, who takes the pinch on that is agriculture. Now, some of those landowners are choosing that because they're, they're not making a good run at agriculture. So, you know, they've turned to, uh, some other ways to help make a living. Yeah, it's tough to, uh, you know, have a landowner propose to have renewable energy on their property. And then have everybody around him tell, tell you that that's a bad idea. And you have to just sit there and decide how it's going to be. So you, you know, a lot going on with planning commission to help, uh, come to a good decision. But, you know, the main thing is that we're, we're looking at the current laws. Uh, we're looking at how things, uh, are supposed to be. And we're, you know, making the right decision for Lake County. And I think you hear Commissioner Albertson saying, we'd like to see some local, uh, changes. Um, that would, uh, influence maybe whether somebody's going to apply to Lake County or not. Because whether it's a fifty-foot, uh, off of their property line or five hundred feet may make a difference. Whether that project's a go or not, so, those are just some of the, the little things like that.
Well, uh, along with that real quickly is that if we had project sites already picked out, you know, throughout the county. It would make it a lot easier for everyone that said, if an applicant come and said, hey, does this piece of property work? And it's already on the list of property that we'd accept. You know, it just streamlines everything, so we don't have this. But we also want to protect private property rights too, we want you to make a living off your own property. And so it's, I'll let you continue, Mary.
Well, I just think that the current planning commission members can say you can't please everybody and that's for sure. I think, uh, we, you find that out pretty fast, but, uh, you know, we want to play by the rules. Uh, the state has rules regarding solar and renewable energy, we want, we need to take a look, hard look at that. And then determine if we need to make rules beyond that, you know, to, that would satisfy, uh, the county. And the people that live there. That have to, that they get to live with solar and renewable energy for potentially the rest of their life, so. That's, that's what I'm looking at.
Two, if, if it'd be possible, ask if John Jennings at this time would like to.
Yeah, I was going to start going around the room, so we'll start with those on Zoom right now. John, can you go ahead and, John Jennings, do you have any comments on what we're talking about?
Well, thank you, Commissioners, uh, you hear me, I'm John Jennings, the, uh, Commissioner Special Department of Conservation Development. Um, you know, I'm really here to just listen, uh, I think tonight. Uh, I've thought a lot about solar and, um, and the types of, of instances that you've described in our countering. Um, I would like to be a participant in the, in the process to move forward. Um, I think, you know, there's a lot of, lot of sense, uh, being, being spoken to, both about, uh, you know, being, being considerate. Uh, a carefully consideration of the, of the county's values and interests, um, among those property rights, right? Um, I think that the, the idea of a third-party facilitator, uh, is, is never a bad one. Uh, I don't know, uh, the individual from Oregon Agricultural Trust, is that Oat, uh, Goay Oat or their acronym Oat? Uh, so, Mel McAdams, uh, is someone I've known for a long time, is their, I think their executive director. Uh, they seem like a pretty solid outfit, I just don't know them very well. Um, so I think, you know, the kind of questions that are, that are being put to the table, hey, you know, we want to do something productive. You know, this, this, and, and constructive, um, is the, is, is the right way to be leaning. Um, I don't have any specific recommendations, but, uh, you know, I'd really love to work with the county and, and the stakeholders. And, and try to get a process finished by somehow. So I'll just, uh, I'll be happy to try to answer your questions. Um, but I'll go ahead and, and go back on mute, uh, to the others that, that would like to talk.
We sure appreciate you coming, taking your time, John. Uh, Lori, or one of you ladies, do you guys want to talk next?
Sure, I'll go ahead, um. I am excited to see us moving towards, uh, maybe some direction with the solar sighting committee. I, I think several of us felt a lot of empathy for Darwin last year, heading this process while he was going through some health stuff. Um, so I think it does make some sense to bring in a third-party facilitator. Um, and I, I think Elaine makes a good suggestion on who might be a good facilitator. Um, I read through the materials that were provided by Oregon Ag Trust. And the only thing that I felt, felt short on is public process. And perhaps Elaine could speak to this more, but, um, it is, as many of you have said, it is complicated. Uh, vetting people's feelings on solar, um, there are a lot of reasons why people do want solar on their private land. And especially the larger landowners, those are been the ones we've tended to have the most success with. Um, you know, those are the people who are looking to diversify for one reason or another. Um, so I would say it's, it's not straightforward and I think it's important that, that there is a public process maybe outside of. Um, you know, the sort of public process that happens when there's a specific solar project being cited. You know, that tends to bring out really strong opinions. And I think that doing this in sort of a more measured way, where people think through what are the benefits, what are the drawbacks? How do you do this so that it supports, you know, the direction the county wants to move? And supports your economic goals and, you know, all the things. Um, I, I support putting that into a, into a reasoned process. Um, I think that's about all I have to say, that I just noticed in his proposal, there didn't seem to be. He just added a couple of hours for public process, which didn't seem sufficient for, uh, the kind of feedback I think you want to get.
Very good point, very good point, thank you, Lori. Lori, can you state your name and stuff for the record, just because this is a public meeting?
Yes, Lori Hutchinson, and I'm with Obsidian Renewables.
Thank you, you're also on the solar advisory committee.
Yes, and also on the solar advisory committee.
Okay, Elaine.
Hi, uh, I'm Elaine Albridge, I'm Elaine Houston, permitting attorney with Davis Strike Tremaine. Um, I've appreciated the opportunity to participate or listen in, um, in the solar sighting committee that, um, Lake County's been undertaking. Um, there's a lot going on in Oregon right now with solar sighting. Um, just to touch on a couple of things that the Board and Planning Commission and others may be aware of. But there's, um, several solar sighting conversations taking place across the state. Um, your neighbor kind of county is working on an ordinance update, uh, specific to, to solar sighting. And some of the issues that they have seen in their county about, um, solar on non-irrigated and irrigated and big game range. Um, so that's, that's a process to look to, as we may able, what's, what's going on and how, um, Lake County may adapt from that one. There's also, um, this, there's a consensus-based solar sighting project that's being run by a group of nonprofits and the P S U. Um, which includes multiple, um, state agency stakeholders, as well as industry and environmental and other NGO stakeholders. Um, to discuss not only like kind of voluntary solar sighting guidelines for statewide, statewide application. Um, but also some, you know, principles and priorities, um, that a cross, cross-section of stakeholders feel are important for, for the state. Um, there's also O D F Ws working on developing their own solar sighting guidelines. Another, um, habitat mitigation policy, um, that they have, are, are going to be discussing with folks or have been discussing with folks. So, there's a lot going on and one thing I would suggest for consideration as the county moves forward in this process is just thinking about what for. The, um, recommendations take from the solar sighting committee, whether they are policy, um, like golden policy statements that are embodied in the comprehensive plan. Or whether there's specific, you know, zoning, um, ordinance amendments that amend particular development standards. And, and impose certain sighting, um, limitations, um, so there's, or whether it's more of like a renewable energy and agricultural. Um, cohabitation plan, I don't know, but some type of other, you know, plan that talks about how the county is, is going to. Uh, balance the different interests and, and resources within, uh, with the county. So, those are just some thoughts, I'm glad to see the process is still moving forward, I always think facilitation's a great idea. Um, that helps people stay on task and organized and can give, you know, concrete takeaway homework items to bring back to the next meeting. So I think that's, um, a great suggestion, I'm happy to continue to, to participate, um, as we go forward.
Thanks Elaine.
Nick, you want to speak?
Yeah, um, I think bringing in an outside facilitator is a good choice. I also appreciate bringing in that facilitator when they have a bunch of G I S and mapping skills. I think having this stuff out in front of us visually is going to be an effective tool for working through this process, you know? We all have some sort of understanding of land use stuff around here, I mean, it's Darwin, of course. But for the rest of us, seeing where, you know, seeing different zoning things and being able to like look at this stuff at different layers. I think will really be effective at helping us decide, you know, where we want to support projects versus where we repose. And I'm also curious from a more technical side, if there are specific or limited number of points of interconnection within the county. If we can start at those locations and then work our way out, where the feasible radius is, where, you know, we're seeing the distance standard connection from projects. And maybe focus some of our efforts on starting at points of interconnection and working our way out from there. And then, sorry, one other thought is, also if there are areas where we would really support projects, like old brownfield sites or unusable land areas. There's opportunity to like, I guess incentivize projects being built in that area and work with developers on that. So, perhaps we could have some control or, you know, more of a say as projects are built in the future. Just, just a thought, but, yeah.
Jim?
Well, I, I go back to the days when I was in mixed position and thinking about the renewable energy plan we put together. And we were going to be geothermal and, uh, and, uh, solar was backscatter site was the last on the list. Uh, biomass, geothermal, and then there, and then all of a sudden solar went up. And a good thing, that you've heard me testify when I was with L C R I, not on the planning commission, against the solar project, it was on irrigated land. And back then I started thinking, boy, have we thought enough about this, is that all we care about in Lake County? And being the next district conservationist with soil conservation, or, oh, I need to H myself, now it's natural resource conservation, so it's good. You know, I go soils and soil types, we use that on our. types, we use that on our conditional use permits, could be one method. Because when I testified before, I said, not on irrigated land, we're out there looking at safe, fresh outland land, you know? But that's not a current definition, you know? So maybe something like soil types would be stuff. And then I wasn't too worried, and Lori could, with Obsidian, could correct me, because I felt the next site was probably going to take the capacity of the lines going south out of Lakeview, and there wouldn't be much room for much more soil. And then, uh, connections to BKA happened, to Bonneville Power Administration lines. So I don't know where that'll end, and with the president's infrastructure, you don't know where that'll end. So we got to think more about this. And I think that a facilitator is appropriate. But I want to tell you also, I got chewed, chewed really out really bad by a rancher because I didn't allow, didn't believe in solar on irrigated land. And it's, well, it's that person's land, and what they could do with it's their right. You know, so we get all those sides, those things happen. So I think facilitating a course and finding the right method and stuff, I think is appropriate. Because I also think some of those other renewables are not off the table yet even. They went to the wayside for different reasons, but I think they're going to be back on the table.
Karen?
So I agree with, um, I'm sorry, the attorney, I forgot her name already, I'm sorry.
Elaine.
Elaine, I agree with Elaine, that it perhaps should be built into the comprehensive plan. Additionally, have, um, maybe ordinances, nobody has mentioned Department of Energy, but their, um, certification process, I've reviewed Obsidian's certifications, is pretty extensive and comprehensive. And so mirroring some of that for our county might, I mean, they already have to go through a bunch of hoops for the state, but mirroring some of their requirements for our county might also be something that we should be looking at. So I think that, I think that, um, also your facilitator is a good idea. It kind of buffers the, um, public angst against the county commissioners to have a third party involved, um, as a facilitator. So I think that is also a good idea.
I just wish we could all just be good neighbors, you know? I could build a solar plant because I could retire, and it wouldn't hurt any of my neighbors. That's, it'd be the perfect borough.
Uh, I guess they have more questions than anything else.
All right, what, what's your name?
Stu Burgess, Stu.
So you're on the planning commission, Stu?
Yeah, I live in Paisley. Um, so, uh, we're talking just solar, I mean, if somebody wants to put solar panels on their house, that's not an issue, right?
Yeah, we're talking large-scale solar.
Yeah, for a problem.
Yeah, commercial operation, really. Um, yeah, much of the smaller solar, they're typically excluded.
So before I moved here, I subscribed to the newspaper so I could kind of get caught up on the local, and I read a couple articles about, like, I think a solar thing in, in Christmas Valley, that the poles are up and it never has gotten built. Uh, and in Paisley, when I first got to walk around town, and people said, oh yeah, there's the geothermal thing that doesn't work, you know? It's there, they built it, and then it doesn't work. So one of my concerns would be people that don't finish the project, I guess, you know? If they're going to ask to use land and then not complete it, it doesn't seem right. Um, and maybe you could fill me in on some of that type of stuff. Um, I was wondering if we've looked at other places to see what they're doing that maybe are in the same kind of, you know, situation, even if it's maybe, uh, another state even, you know, what they've done there, so maybe we're not, you know, reinventing the wheel. And I know that if you go to Oklahoma, there's people with oil derricks in their backyards, and there's one on the state Capitol lawn, you know? So maybe we could co-cohabitate some of this stuff, I don't know. Um, I guess, uh, so is there no zoning for, for something like solar?
Yeah, there's zoning.
There's zoning?
But, like, we're, we're mainly off the states, and the county doesn't really have any of their own requests, so.
Um, then my only other question would be just, I hope, just for my own sake, you guys be clear what you want from us and, and, you know, what, what kind of answers you want answered from us, and how we can help.
So speaking of, uh, from the planning commission, what we do want, whether you vote in favor or against, we want your reason. We don't care what you do, why you picked this, but we do want your reason that you picked it, because that helps us make a legitimate decision on the decisions that we have, that are brought before us. And so if you just say, no, it doesn't meet planning commission's requirements, and leave it at that, I don't, I don't have the time to try to figure out why you picked that way you did. And so no matter which way you decide on anything, no, not just solar, just state the reason, state the ORS or the OAR, and the reason why you wanted to apply it or didn't. And, you know, that's all I have on that.
Terrick, I'll speak on that just real briefly. Um, so for our planning, we have a number of new planning commissioners here. Um, John Jennings and myself, we, we actually were talking about trying to make sure that you guys got some good training. Um, we haven't done a training for a long time. Darwin and I have been talking about it, we're going to try and work together to do some land use law training for you guys. Um, you guys are, you guys are volunteering to step into a very uncomfortable role in your community, but one that is absolutely essential. And you guys are doing a, and, I mean, you're, you're going to do great, you're going to do great. But we want to set you up for success, and we want to provide you as much information as possible. I think out of our previous planning commission, only one of our planning commissioners had been to a training, and, uh, and that happened several years prior. So we want to try and, you know, start off on a good foot, set you guys up, and I think I'm going to echo Commissioner Alberston's point. If you take a yes or a no vote on something, it really helps us because when that gets appealed, or if it gets appealed, to us, so we at least know where to start. We, we don't, like I, I, I told my wife, I can't read your mind, you know? So, so, you know, just give us something to go off of, so we at least know where to start, because, you know, we could, uh, especially on a large-scale, big application, if you saw something that wasn't right for you, and it didn't meet allowable use, and it wasn't legal, and you say, nope, I'm going to vote against this, and maybe you get outvoted, we'd still like to know where you're at. So we can evaluate that, and we can look back and say, oh, you know, he saw something, you know, whatever. So those kind of things, you know, we just, we're, that's what we're looking to get from our planning commission in the future. And we want to, and what we want to give you is as many tools as possible to be successful and deliver the best possible outcome, the most just decision to the public, so.
And if you don't have a, if you can't find an OAR or an ORS that you believe is the reason why you're making that decision, I don't care if you tell me your own personal feeling is, I don't think this project's going to work because it'll be a detriment to this, this and that, because of this, this and this, or the opposite, you know? So just tell us why you want it or why you don't, so.
And I just made a vote a while back, and I did it for one reason, and I don't know if I'd have stated it to the public, because I thought you three had more latitude than the planning commission to do some negotiation, I thought it was better handled by you than the planning commission. So I don't know how to state that. I knew what my legal obligation was, voted accordingly, but I really felt it should be, you have more latitude for negotiations and do other things, you know? So I don't know how to state that.
We've got a longer leash to hang ourselves, man.
That's right, exactly.
All right, let's keep going around.
Yeah.
Oh, I think I'll just listen in on this meeting, my, my opinions of solar might not fit into the theme of this.
No, we do want your opinions, too.
Do you mind at least speaking from the road position and on road issues?
And, and so having a, you know, a third party, I think is probably a good thing. There, there really, I, I always have to, I always have to, I guess, take note when I look down across, um, a lot of the information that comes out of solar and, and, and what is the mitigation, and, and there's a lot of worries about where the jackramps are going to go when the solar farm gets put in, um, but not a lot of worry about how the road assets are going to hold up to all the development. And so that's where I come from, is hopefully being able to work with these developers upon their approvals to continue our road assets in good form when they're gone. I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Can, can I ask Kevin a question?
Of course.
Or, or maybe the group a question? So if that development goes through on the BLN land, and they have to go through our county roads, on our county roads, don't you feel that we should have a say in, um, in some aspect of, some compensation for the use of our roads to get to a BLN site?
Well, yeah, I think through, I think through road use agreement that we, that we're consistently working on in some fashion, we will have, you know, we'll have to work towards that, with that developer.
It's a good question. Oops, no, I was just saying, good question. Carl? Do you have anything?
Who, me?
Yeah, you.
Okay. Well, I think the county's faced with different scenarios on these solar farms. You have smaller farms that go through the planning commission. You have the larger farms that the planning commission doesn't get a chance to, to do anything with or have public comment on. I constantly ask the commissioners to have meetings, to inform the people on, especially the Obsidian farm, of everything that's involved with that. But as far as the planning commission, I think it's, there's, uh, some things that I, I would express that I think applies to more than just the solar. And, uh, Lake County's planning commission is almost always asked to make decisions based on public testimony and articles in their comprehensive plan. Pretty much a scenario, you have a planning commission meeting. The planning commission should be independent and be allowed to reach out beyond just those two testimonies. I think that's what you're talking about, you're trying to reach out, you want more information. Is our comprehensive plan flawed? Even though an, an application could be approved, would it be uncyclable? Is this what you want in Lake County? Would this approval conflict with other parts of our comprehensive plan? And does the planning commission need more information than what is normally submitted, such as block plan? Just because an application complies with our comprehensive plan process does not mean an automatic approval. And that's where I think you're coming from, is that, what are your feelings? What do you want to see happen in Lake County, whether it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan or not? What do you want to do? So, but, uh, I think that's important to, to note, that just because there's an application and it initially appears to comply with the comprehensive plan is not an automatic approval. So on the larger side, such as Obsidian, there's issues that I think everybody in the county needs to know about, is are they planning to use battery houses? Is it in their application to the state when they disclosed and applied for the strategic investment program? The review back states that there's two plans, and maybe the representative from himself, Obsidian, can clarify that. One plan would be with battery houses, one plan would be without battery houses. Secondly, clarification on what revenue Lake County receives should be clarified in the approval process. I've mentioned that before. So, I mean, these are just some of the stuff that I think either the planning commission or the commissioners need to deal with. I know that when Obsidian went with the SIP program, it bypassed the planning commission, but I don't believe it bypassed the authority the commissioners have. So I think the commissioners hereon, since Judge Allen has ruled in favor of Obsidian, I think the commissioners have the upper hand to oversee what actually would be built, uh, and all, if there's battery houses, uh, there would have to be an immense amount of information from whoever's going to do the battery houses to the county with an opportunity for public review. So that's just part of what I've thought about.
Sure. I don't know if you want to go with the next person, do you want to have Lori answer some of the questions that Carl had, or?
Lori, do you want to answer anything? Right now, I know this isn't part of.
Yeah, we're, we're not going to get sidetracked a little bit, but.
Yeah, I can, I can speak, uh, briefly to, I think, the two main points, one of which was, will there or will there not be batteries? Um, we did permit both ways, um, to have maximum, you know, we are, I guess, stepping back, we are, although we're talking about the planning process, these are businesses, and we have to make them economically viable, and when we're taking a big, long shot, you know, we started this process five years ago. So we were not certain whether batteries would be in market or not in market by the time we're selling the power from this project. So in an abundance of optionality, we permitted it both ways to make sure that we have maximum options under our approval. And then, just, I guess, to answer the question, there's, what happens with state siding versus county siding is that you basically pay for extended oversight of the project to go through state siding. So if there are batteries, there is extent, it's more extensive follow-up, you know, something that would be out of Darwin or the planning commission's scope to follow-up to make sure that the batteries are in compliance with all of the criteria that happens under state siding. So I think that answers the battery question. Um, I mean, just as a matter of curiosity, I can say that, um, currently we are putting this out to potential power buyers, and I, I don't think it's going to have batteries, but that's, of course, not a promise. Um, it, it will depend on the eventual buyer of the power of the project. Um, in the SIP negotiation, it is true that does not go through the planning commission, and I think rightly so, that went through a previous slate of county commissioners. Um, I'm actually really proud of that negotiation. I think that we listened pretty well to what the county wanted out of that. Um, just to back up for people who don't know what the SIP is, it's the Strategic Investment, uh, it's under Business Oregon, it's basically a way in which, it basically gives some form to how larger investors, um, can, you know, a way for the county to help with, um, economic development and to put some structure around that so that, uh, all parties are basically, I don't know, I guess, given their due share in, in the process. So the county, there, this, the state oversees this process. Um, but there are points under that which are negotiable with the county, and we did work with the county, um, on figuring out how to make that, um... on figuring out how to make that, um, to structure that in a way that was for the county. And the main thing that the county told us that they wanted was, um, the way property taxes are, are figured, it's, uh, the value of a solar plant changes quite a lot over its life. And so the property tax that is due to the county varies quite a lot over the twenty-five year life of a solar project. And so we basically figured out a way to keep a floor under that so that the county would always get a base level of, um, revenue coming in over the life of the project, uh, which was quite important to the county at the time. And the other thing, and this was based on making sure that some benefit went directly to the community that would be most impacted by the project. Um, the county commissioners at the time worked with us to identify the North Lake County School Foundation. And so uh, in tandem with that strategic investment negotiation, we also made a, um, a, a promise to the, to the North Lake County School Foundation, um, where they're gonna get a contribution for every megawatt that we build. And so, yeah, there's quite a lot of history to that. That was probably a longer explanation. And yes, that typically would not go through the planning process, but that's a little bit of the history of how the strategic investment for Obsidian Solar came to be.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that, Lori. We're gonna move on so we don't get out the weeds. Um, Laura?
Sure. Nora Taylor, I'm one of your new planning commission members, so thank you for having me. Um, I do think change is the only constant and Lake County, sometimes we like change, sometimes we don't, we're kind of on the fence, so um, it becomes an interesting challenge to balance that. Uh, so I do think it's important, we have goals, either, you know, goals before we hire the third-party person, like we need a one-year goal. What do we see at the end of this calendar year? What do we see in three years and in five years? Either for renewable energy as a whole or for solar energy, right? So that when we do spend money and hire somebody, that we make sure they fit within our goals, that we don't end up way off from where we intended, right? Cause that can be very expensive. So just my thoughts. And I do think the idea of a third-party facilitator is good. I wonder if there's an option for an RFI, which is a little bit, hmm, like I think Melanie was talking about, a little bit quicker than an RFP per se, so that way you can just have conversations with companies to see who else is available. There might be a lot of nonprofits that are interested in helping out with this. So, um, just a thought. And then I think documenting, in order to get to those goals, we have to document our current state. What are our current state and what are our challenges, right? So maybe you've already done that, I don't know, but that's my, my two cents.
Richard?
I'm not here in efficient capacity. I could speak fast.
Do you wanna talk about anything as far as solar goes?
Yeah. Um, gotta love Oregon. It's a contradiction. I always tell everybody that Oregon's like a libertarian paradise. We're physically conservative, socially liberal. So I understand when people wanna have rights over their private property rights, but you also have to say the legacy that Tom McCall left us as government Oregon means that we have this vast untouched, um, landscapes that everybody wants to live in. As a real estate agent, I know that Lake County is the next best place that everybody's gonna wanna live in. And, um, as a rancher, I know that there's options for solar that allow for full-scale um, livestock management under those solar panels. Solar panels can be put in lakes, they can be put in pla- many, many places. They can be made so that cattle and sheep can graze under them. There's limitless opportunity, but it comes with an expense. I think one thing that we struggle with in Lake County is the fact that we are used to the mill mentality of the way that we harvest natural resources. Solar companies aren't those partners. They don't stay here, they don't keep their workforce here, they take all the money out of the community, the bulk of the money out of the community, they don't put it back in. So, and that, all that energy, all that money is going somewhere else. We're just the back, back backyard that is so small that we can say nothing to anybody to stop it from being here. So my thoughts on the solar is, this is what we have to look at going forward. I'm changing, I'm selling properties that once sold for six to seven, eight hundred, seven hundred dollars for three to five thousand dollars. I got bigger properties that are selling, the hundred and thirty acre pieces are selling for four thousand dollars an acre. I have a property that might sell, that's gonna be listed, um, that might sell for fifteen thousand dollars an acre, twenty acres. That's gotta, we have to take that into account when we consider what the tax revenue of this community is gonna be. Because I guarantee you, if we litter this landscape with solar plant, those property values are gonna go down. And we're not, when they change the prop, when they, when those people buy those properties, the property tax changes, that's a huge increase. But it's not fair to charge them that tax if the entire landscape is littered with solar project. I think we should bet on the people that want to be in Lake County, not the people that are just taking, extracting our resources and taking it somewhere else.
Well said. Terry? Do you wanna comment?
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Garrett?
Sure. I, I've been involved in the solar issues here, especially with the Blue Mountain proposed facility. I think facilitation is probably the best direction to go at this point in time. If you're looking at changing or modifying ordinances, I would make the suggestion that whoever you have facilitate this, number one, is not an NGO. I think that that's highly important.
It's not a what?
NGO.
What's that?
Non-governmental organization. Uh, I would also suggest that whomever is chosen to facilitate this, be heavily vetted in the citing ordinances and statutes. Because I think Lake County has the capacity. Uh, and we have the local knowledge to write some very good ordinances. What we don't have is we don't have the capacity to make sure that they're within alignment of the state and federal statutes. Um, because we've all learned in here, at a certain point, we lose control of it. And if we are in alignment with the state and the federal statutes, we have more control with it because we're inside the box. So that would be essentially my suggestion to that. Is work towards the ordinances, bring in the, the land commission. Get their concerns about what the development looks like. And if we can create ordinances that, as I heard one of the commissioners state, that lays out a plan so that when we have an interested renewable company come in here, they already know the position of the county. They know how to approach the county, they know why and what not to approach the county with. And that may clear up a lot of this gray area when we have companies coming in here.
Exactly.
So it is, a new ordinance could very well streamline that, and especially if they're in alignment with the state and federal ordinances.
Thank you very much. Darwin, do you wanna finish your thought?
You can be a whole hour.
I'm gonna leave before that hour's up, so yeah.
It shows I didn't start less. You know, I can talk forever. So. Yeah, you know, we, before we started this tonight, I, you know, reflected on the last year, not just in my own life, but just how this committee went. And thought, you know, we've, we started off this project really at the beginning of last year, last January and and gave really an overview of, of, you know, what the commissioners were looking for, having just established this committee and, and we felt that it was most important at that point to at least explain what current rules we had and, and kinda give examples of, of the different agencies that, um, do review these as, um, has been mentioned that, you know, there's the state, energy facility and citing council that will take projects of a larger scale than, than what can be reviewed on a local level through either a goal exception or just a standard condition use permit. Now that we've, we've been through this whole year and, and actually, you know, made a county decision to deny an application um, based on our current rules, um, and ordinances, um, it kinda left me with a question on, again, do we need to go further with adopting a new rule? Because we've actually got to a no, uh, final decision on a county level with our current rules. And knowing, having sat now in this role for eleven years as a plan director and and also, you know, as a planner in the state for almost twenty, the, um, solar rule at the state level has changed many, many times. And if we, um, have to at least apply the state's rule, do we need to adopt a rule that, then we would also need to change and update multiple times as we move forward? And knowing how much work it takes to change our ordinance, I've always been under the impression that if we apply directly what the state has as a minimum, that sets a pretty good bar. Knowing that that goes through many eyes, you know, statewide, anytime they do a rules advisory committee, they're picking, you know, folks from around the state, from the different jurisdictions, but also the agencies. And they, you know, work together to find the best solutions for the statewide goals. Um, but obviously that doesn't necessarily reflect our goals. And so again, seeing that we've gotten to know on a project that, that may on face look like it met the criteria, we still found in our comprehensive plan areas where it was shown that this doesn't meet our, our current plans. And so if that's the work that was done primarily by the commissioners to find that, um, we just need to understand our own rules and what we have better. Uh, that, that includes me. Um, and I, um, that's why I appreciate the board saying, hey, let's get a facilitator because, um, just to tell you, last year, you know, obviously with stuff going on with me, I missed more time than ever. And we had almost double the amount of land use applications, not including major controversial ones like that we had. And so, um, moving forward, you know, Richard, I, you're right. I mean, we've got cheap land and it's only gonna go up, but if it, if it, we put the wrong ki- types of development, it may then fall down. And then we're gonna hurt a lot of the people that live here and, and they're gonna lose a lot of value. Um, and then it'll make it difficult for them to stay when they want to stay. And so you know, citing, um, Nick brought up, you know, we have to have, if we're gonna have a facilitator, have the GIS, um, key component in it. And as, as, uh, John Jennings has pointed out, having sent him on the proposal that Commissioner Williams shared with us, um, I, I just wanna read his comment real quick. It says, having just glanced at the proposal from O A T, I think a lot of the data will be available from the Oregon renewable citing or energy citing assessment, the ORSA. And, um, through, al- although ORSA doesn't attempt uh, to interpret the information in the way that the O A, O A T proposes, uh, which would take the next step. I also agree with Lori that the public participation element seems a bit slim. Any, what, what hasn't really been discussed, which I, I've brought up a couple different times and, and barely touched on it, is that this process, you know, essentially was set up so that we can get community buy-in to what, uh, we were wanting to see a- at the local level. Um, so that if, if this solar committee, you know, presents a rule, um, with, along with the planning commission to the board of commissioners, it can be adopted. And not something that we would just spin our wheels on and then get to the board commissioners level and, and they were rejected. Um, knowing all along, the state also has to accept whatever rule we come up with. And so it can't be, or we're uh, um, paint people into such a narrow box that, that we're not gonna allow for this development anymore. We, before this committee was even formed, we talked about, um, and there was a proposal to put a moratorium on solar in, uh, at, at least for six months in the county. And, um, knowing all along on my end that, that, you know, to try to paint a GIS picture of where solar's going to go exactly, uh, is really a hard thing to do. Um, when we talk about not only personal property rights, but how do you base a land use decision? And it, and it has to have certain criteria framework, you know, the goalposts have to be, you know, put up so that developers have an idea of where they can potentially even go. And knowing that we haven't changed our rules in all these years, it, there has been some certainty that, that developers have had. Um, and they've then invested into our community and looked and made those lease options with landowners and purchased lands and, and done in many cases, many cultural or, um, wildlife studies before they even come to us with that conditional use per, permit application. So the money has been spent in many cases and agreements have been made many, many years prior to a, a land use review. And so what, by changing the goalposts, so to speak, they thought the land use was this all along and went out and started doing their purchase power amendments and working on all these uh, different agreements with, with landowners and, and, you know, filing purchasers that that if we now change it, that's gonna be very difficult. All while they, I mean, most of these developers are staying up with the state rules. And so I, again, I'm not gonna try to speak too much long, but I, I think we just have to decide on, on, you know, if it's a certain setback from home, we can figure that out, but it can also be done on an individual case basis because you know, in many cases, what we've seen is, is there's always gonna be, uh, you know, an effect to anyone that can see it. You know, visi- visibly, they're gonna be hurt by it, but, you know, in, in the cases of those that are opposition to it. But what physical effect is there, an actual effect that's, that's happening in the ground? For the case that we talked about out here, there were certain A U Ms on that land that, that we weren't even aware about at the county commissioner level. Um, and then when it came out at the board commissioner level, it was a huge eye-opener to, well, now we have had a negative effect to the agricultural base of the valley, but also where are those cattle now gonna go? And that, that was a game changer, I think, for the board. And, and even for me, I took it going, whoa, what? How in the world is that still getting grazed when we've said all along this wasn't, you know, gonna affect agriculture in any way? So, um, you know, the, the non-farm drawings that are out there, they're continuing to be developed throughout our county because we, you know, the Oregon Land Valley, uh, you know, company that divided the whole Goose Lake Valley early on, but then also the Penphillips situation up north. And we've got thousands and thousands of lots out there that, you know, as you continue to, you know, fill in these gaps, um, we're getting a lot of non-farm drawings intermixed with, with what has historically been just agricultural communities. And that's, that's what's truly becoming the effect. Um, but there's nothing we can do about that other than to start denying non-farm drawings. And, and really, that's, that's also not uh, appropriate according to our own comprehensive plan. We said that, that these people should be allowed the same rights that they had.
We already have housing shortages. The last thing I would do is.
So anyways, what?
So, so I guess, you know, when Darwin and I talked, you know, in between and after and before this last process, and I think I, I learned a lot from Darwin and I think he learned something from me too, as far as when you live the ranching lifestyle and somebody tries to take a little bit of that away, you turn into a bulldog, right? And so, um, our heritage means so much to me that giving a little bit of it away at a time is really hard till for me to swallow. And I, I don't wanna slow anybody down from making a buck. I don't wanna slow anybody down from doing what they want on their own land. But I also do not wanna lose our culture. And if you can put a lot in the deal and shake it up, that's where we're at. So.
Yes.
Can I say something as a member of the public?
You may.
Um, I think it's important to have minimum standards for things like SECPACs. Just because if it goes to where the county is just a SAC, a special advisory guild, um, with like an HSETC project, I don't want that to be overlooked when we're using our discretion. I think it's important to set like minimum solar standards. We don't, we don't wanna overlook that.
So if we were going to go with the Department of Energy, um, setback rules because of the EMF and, and all of that, there is already a buffer with the state of five hundred feet from any dwelling.
No, fifty.
Um, I don't know, Lori, do you, do you have that number?
Fifty.
Is it five hundred feet is a buffer from, um?
What she's talking about is state rule.
Talking about state rule.
State rule.
Is there a five hundred foot buffer for the?
Is John Jennings still?
No, I think, John, oh no, it says John's still there.
His dog.
I am.
What's the state minimum buffer?
So, I don't know, uh, as a board member, I, I'm not familiar with one, I mean, the LDC rules do not include, you know, a fifth numerical setback. Uh, and I, I have to confess, I'm not familiar enough with the EFSAC signing standard to know if they do or not.
So I think in the certification process, I did read something where there was a five hundred foot buffer for the electrical magnetic force of the panels themselves. That it had to be setback from any adjacent property that wasn't part of the facility. Is that, is that correct, Lori?
Karen, less you, I'm, I'm not sure I've read that, but I, I made a note that I will read it and I will follow up and get back to you. I don't actually know if there was, if there is an additional setback besides the county overlay involved in the EFSAC permit, but that does ring a bell with the, with the, with the, with the study that you mentioned, so yeah, I'll, I'll get back to Darwin and he'll, and I'll get him to distribute that out. Thank you for doing your homework, that's impressive.
I think it's five hundred feet from a county road. It's fifty feet from deed of property line and five hundred feet from an accessible road.
So it doesn't say from a dwelling?
From a dwelling. What was articulated to me, it was fifty feet off of my deed of boundary.
Sounds like it wouldn't, it wouldn't be enough.
It sounds close, doesn't it?
Yes. It sounds close for the, for the electrical magnetic field that they were talking about in the study.
There was no discussion about that.
And, and where did you get your information from?
Blue Marmot.
Oh, from the Blue Marmot? So, so in order to get their certification though, through the state, they had to go through? Did, did you get that from their certification, Lori?
That was in their plot plan. Five hundred foot barrier off of a county border access. Fifty feet from a deed of piece of property without roads.
Okay, oh, I was reading the obsidian paperwork, so let me, I'll look at that too.
So you can kind of see the difference, so, you know, just between two different.
You would, you would think fifty feet would not be enough.
So, even the problem with five hundred, to look back at the last one that we reviewed, every house was more, gonna be more than five hundred from the first panel. I mean, and that's even with the stuff that was extended across Rafael Road, so five hundred feet, although it sounds like a great, big number, it, it is for the developer who's trying to maximize the tax law that they have available to them. But then it isn't when, when you've gotta look at it, you drive home by it and everything else and so that, that's the tough part about, and even five hundred feet wouldn't be, you know, from a road or a county road even then, so you know, the tough part is, is where do we put it in the appropriate areas that, that you guys want and I think that's the, the hard part, you know, knowing that I've done this now for, you know, almost fifteen, twenty years, not just with solar but with wind, it's, it can be, you know, very complicated when trying to balance, you know, the, you know, public need, which is, you know, again, what our power producers are, have, they have a need that they have to produce a certain amount of renewables and in the state of Oregon and nationwide will be that way, it's how do we balance it? And I, I do wanna touch on one last thing I didn't before, and when it comes to, you know, this resource, you know, the whole county's got the resource, you know, any, any high desert, you know, kind of area would have a high solar potential like, like we do here. But when, when I look at what it's brought into the county so far, I, you know, I'm not the assessor, but I've gotten a lot of information from our tax assessor and you know, the sheet that I share on our website with the list of approved projects, roughly twenty projects have been reviewed in Lake County, of which, there's only like six of them that are built, six or seven of those and some are broken into different corporations, LLCs. But when it comes down to, you know, out of the top twenty taxpayers, ten of them are solar projects and of those ten, they're on roughly nine hundred acres and it's producing roughly a million dollars in tax revenue every year. And so when we talk about, you know, you know, they're, they're only taking, that they're, they're actually bringing in a ton more resources to not just the county, because that million dollars would spread through the valuation table to each of the taxing districts. Some of it's through, you know, a lease, you know, I, I do count the county airports in that number of roughly, you know, eighty thousand dollars, whatever it is a year, where we're just leasing. But you can think of the landowners, if we got that much for our, our lease, those landowners are getting somewhere near that or possibly more as well. And so, for nine hundred acres, the county's, you know, four hundred roughly, you know, project, five hundred more at, at that ratio, I mean, you're, you're talking about a hundred thousand plus to those landowners who I think it was Lori, or what, somebody said, you know, they're looking to diversify these large ranchers, a lot of which are where these products are at. Huffords, you know, in, in Fort Rock, I mean, you know, Dinsdale's approved for one, you know, others have been approved too and it's you know, it can certainly help agriculture, you know, and that's, that's the part that I look forward to, you know, Duburu, I mean, whether they've got approved or not, you know, they own property in our urban growth boundary, in town limits, which could have possibly done something more, you know, bring that second grocery store we all hope to have someday, you know, something like that. There, a bunch of what is, but, you know.
He'll go on forever.
Yeah, well, it's good I can cut it off, go ahead.
I was thinking what you were talking about culturally and our heritage and everything else, but, you know, I've only been here fifteen years, I'm not a farmer, I'm not a rancher, I don't work for a farmer, I don't work for a rancher. When I came here, the, one of the things I noticed, and I came, of course, to the North End, one of the things I noticed was the lack of industry, of light industry, any kind of industry, the lack of opportunity for growth in that direction. And I, I haven't seen a lot of change with that, I, I've looked at, I look at our Christmas Valley Airport, it's stocked in with private homes on one side and with their little, their little hangars on the other side. We have just property. We have an airport with no fuel, we have I watched, I used to live near the Bend, Bend municipal, I watched them go from the little flight shop and one hangar to two miles of hangars. With light industry in every single one of those. And job opportunities for people, because people are coming here, our communities are growing, agriculture is not gonna support all of those people or their children. And I think Lakeview's saying that, I think Paisley's saying that, we're raising our children, we're growing our children, where are our children going? They are going away, and why are they going away? Because there's no work, there's no opportunity to do that. In other areas besides agriculture or support, uh, a dismissive supports agriculture, especially if they're not here. So the other thing I, as you were talking about driving by, is that, you know, I drive to Redmond, there's a great big solar farm right on the highway and you don't even see it, you probably won't even notice.
I do, I see it.
Well, I mean, you see it, but is it offensive, is it hurting you? I mean, no. If, you know, it was, it was, it wasn't even land that was cultivated in any way, shape or form, it was just scrub land.
It was just great, wide open, beautiful to look at.
There's, there's nothing great and wide open between Bend and Redmond.
So, so, real quick, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in your, the line chair just real quick and then I'm gonna actually leave, because I've got another appointment. But I, I do, I'm gonna play devil's advocate here, just for a brief second, to bring some perspective here. I was actually attacked by a constituent and a member of the public not too long ago because of a position that I took conference. And they pointed their finger in my chest and they said, James, how would you feel if this was in your backyard? Okay, you've heard this one before. Reality is, your backyard ends at your property line. You actually don't have property rights beyond that. If you don't like that, move to Soviet Russia. So, I'm gonna, I'm stating that because I actually agree that we do need to preserve our culture. But there's more at stake than just a visual representation of it. Social aspect as well. And how we treat each other and how we respect each other, their property rights, their boundaries, when we go down this road. And you want government, us, in this case, to write rules on what people can do and what people can't, you be careful what genes and what dictators you wish for. Because they will have a demand on you. That, I think, is the culture that we have preserved and the people before us have preserved for a long time of maximizing the rights of the people. And that's at stake also. So we have to keep that in mind when we talk about preserving our culture. Now, okay, let's say I don't want that in my backyard, which I actually completely understand. Completely, I actually, my family moved to Summer Lake above Anarez Bore in nineteen seventy-seven. There were no houses there, none. George Carlin was the closest neighbor we had and he was literally like six miles away. My family built a home, we had the big old wide open outdoor spaces, my family raised six kids and enjoyed a good life in a good place, and really what I would call the heart of Lake County and I call it my home to this day. Someone decided to build an RV park next door to me. I have people in ATVs and vehicles and Jeeps running down my road, past my house at fifty miles an hour, all the time. I never showed up at that person's land use deal and said he couldn't do that. I never showed up and my father never showed up at anyone's land use a conditional use application for a non-farm dwelling on any of that, I'm actually the only person with green pasture in the entire suburban Summer Lake subdivision. In fact, the RV park was built on one of the, the fields that my father cleared with a grub hoe and planted alfalfa for the first time ever. So we just have to keep that in mind when we talk about what we allow and what we do. When we look at the ORSs, I think Commissioner Alveson pointed that out, you gotta have some ORSs to back you up when you start to say no to somebody, because when it gets appealed to us and the ruling that we make as a quasi judicial board, that's not the it's not a normal, everyday commissioner decision. Our decisions can be appealed to the Court of Appeals all the way up to Luba, because what we're making a determination on at that point is law. So, you know, I, I get where people are coming from, I get the fact that maybe we don't always wanna look at solar, it changes the look of our landscape, it changes our community. But if we start changing, that's what we need to be cautious of. On that note, I so, appreciate you indulging me.
Back on the buffer or setbacks, I think that's an area that the commissioners might have a chance to review, the absolion, obsidian project when it gets back in your lap before that has started. There's probably, the setbacks are always the controversial part of the solar farm, the buffer areas. And without a change, there's gonna be a seven foot high fence, forty-five feet from the center line for a mile and a half up north of Oil Drive Road. That's not gonna be pretty. Probably doesn't have to be. She can probably address that. Okay, so does anybody else wanna make any comments? Wrap this up.
Well, I'd just say that, like I said, in Oklahoma, where you have an oil derrick in your backyard, it's making you seven hundred bucks a day, you start to live with it pretty easy in your backyard, you know.
Well, I appreciate all of you guys coming, I appreciate you guys giving your time to help us try to figure this out. You guys on to, do you guys wanna make a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one more comment about just, um, whether, I, I think part of maybe why the solar siding committee along with, you know, all the other things that happened last year, I, I think stating a real clear purpose, no matter if it's third party run or, or if it's to the siding committee, I think writing up that sort of clear, what are the goals and deliverables is gonna be important, so make sure we don't sort of just keep talking about it. You know, of course, we're, you know, it's easy to keep talking about it because obviously there's just many opinions in the room, but I think there's a real desire for Lake County to have some certainty on solar siding and, you know, there's certainly a desire of people who have been working in Lake County to understand what the landscape is there and should we keep, should we keep working, you know, to develop here or should we, should we push on, you know, so I'm as interested as anyone to get some clarity on what the deliverables are and, and getting somewhere with this. And then I also wanted to just elevate something that John Jennings said in the chat about the, I don't pay too much money for GIS, there are a lot of free resources. And that ORESA process, it's a little confusing to use the map, but, you know, I think, you know, with a half an hour's time, you can you can get pretty far along in seeing the overlap of the different resources and where you would and wouldn't cite things either from an agricultural perspective or a habitat perspective or electrical infrastructure perspective, so yeah, don't pay your third party too much for that. That's all I got.
Okay, we're going to adjourn the meeting at five twenty-five.